Call meeting's ordered. Start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call the roll please.
Crouch.
Here.
Darby.
Here.
Herry.
Here.
McMullin.
Here.
Mayor Beadie.
Here. There any changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to the public comment section of the meeting. For anyone that would like to make public comment, you have three minutes and we'd ask that you approach the podium and state your name, please.
Sir, I'll be timing, I'll let you do the thirty seconds.
Is everyone able to hear? Good evening, my name is Thomas Kmetzke, I'm treasurer for the Redding Fire Protection District. I have been the main contact person for the district board for discussion of the intergovernmental agreement in this requirement. My statements had to do with item agenda number eight under new business updated intergovernmental contracts. The Redding Fire District and fire department would first like to recognize City Street or Street Fire Department and current ambulance service AMT for their cooperation and support in service of our community and rural community. The role they play has helped ensure the safety and welfare of the public. The Redding Fire District has a task ahead of us, we could not have foreseen even a couple of years ago, the loss of an ambulance service. The Redding Fire Department was organized in nineteen fifty-six and the fire district sometime after that. Our current tax rate is the second lowest in Lincoln County and the second lowest in LaSalle County. We receive no additional bill of township funding. I initially started discussions with Mr. Plaiman after I reached out to Chief Byrne in late April this year. In August, we discussed an agreement that was between Pontiac Fire Department and the Cornell Fire Department where the Pontiac Fire Department would cover the ambulance costs for Cornell at cost of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars based on the cost of four hundred and fifty dollars a call over the average of the last three years' call volume, which would be forty-four calls. Mr. Plaiman indicated during our September district meeting, um, oh, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Plaiman indicated we used the formula provided by Pontiac and Cornell. During our September district meeting, we discussed based on our last three years' average, two hundred and fifty-six ambulances and EMS calls, the total would be one hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred dollars billed to us annually. Well, starting this current fiscal year with just over one hundred and one thousand dollars in the bank and liabilities of over eighty thousand, we've decided we could only offer twenty-five thousand dollars at this time to the city to continue the ambulance service. Since we have no funding mechanism in place to generate additional funds, Mr. Plaiman indicated it would take to continue the service. We also determined we in good faith would attempt a tax increase at referendum on the April ballot to help support the fees. Mr. Plaiman also indicated our offer was insufficient and was insistent on signing an agreement at the hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred dollars, which he stated could accumulate until a referendum was passed, then the accumulated amount could be paid off over a period of twenty years.
Thirty seconds.
We, the Redding Fire District, have never refused to pay, we just cannot agree to an amount that we have no way of funding or paying at this time. We are open to continue discussions after the April ballot at either the successful passage or the unfortunate defeat of our referendum. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else with public comments? Okay, then we'll go to item number one, ordinance twenty-two fourteen authorizing a public city right-of-way for an east-west alley between Bazaar and First Street, eight oh nine, eight oh three to eight oh nine Bazaar Street, Illinois, LaSalle and Livingston Counties. Can I get a motion and second to remove this item from the table? Yeah, I heard Tim and then I'll go with, look at that one to Jacob. And, right, a motion and second, um, now to adopt the ordinance, which will open us up for discussion.
We should call the roll.
Oh, okay, I'll shoot.
Crouch.
Aye.
Darby.
Aye.
Herry.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Okay, now this has been removed from the table, can I get a motion and second to adapt the ordinance? To basically open, put it back into discussion and so that we can call a vote.
Second.
Okay, that'll be Brian and Matt with the second. All right, discussion on this one. Jeremy, thank you for going out and marking the right-of-way and where everything is. I know at least a handful, I know a couple of you have gone out, I think everybody has. I just know because I caught one of you there. So, if anyone, everyone's had a chance to see it, if there's no other discussion, then I would say clerk call the roll.
Mayor, I would just remind the city council that this does require a supermajority vote. This requires four votes to pass, not just two.
And to pass, we, to vacate the alley, it would be an aye.
Correct.
Not one of these, um, where we're voting no to say yes.
Correct, so a yes vote means you are voting to vacate the alley, a no vote means you are denying the alley vacation.
All right, clerk call the roll, please.
Crouch.
No.
Darby.
No.
Herry.
No.
McMullin.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Nay. We'll go on to new business. We item two, ordinance twenty-two sixteen authorizing the vacation of a public right-of-way for the alley south of two oh one East Twelfth Street, Shurrier, Illinois, LaSalle and Livingston Counties, Illinois. You get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Tim and second by Matt. Any discussion? I said, I know public comment was...
Yeah, public comment is closed.
But she's the petitioner. If you would like to hear from the petitioner on the alley vacation.
I'd like to read to this moment, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, okay, it's council, okay.
Can I bring you guys back to the conversation?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Eileen Lottman and I am the owner of Business Activity and Learning Center located at two oh one East Twelfth Street. I put in the request for the alley to be closed for a number of reasons, the main goal of that being a safety concern. If you look at the map that was sent out, we own the property that is located at two oh one, which is the building, and then there's an alley to the south of there, and we also own the lot that is south of that. So we essentially have our parking lot that is on the premises of the building and a second parking lot that is south of there. On that note, people are using that second parking lot pretty much all the time because we don't have enough spaces in our primary lot, and what that means that our general population is ages zero to twelve, which is children, so I have a large safety concern for people driving through the alley when my patrons are walking across there. I put out bullet points on here, number one, just again discussing the ages of those children, we have approximately two to three hundred people that come to our property every single week, between classes every night, a Friday event, Saturday and Sunday birthday parties, so there are a lot of people walking back and forth, and they don't know it's an alley per se, because it doesn't appeal that way, they just think it's part of our parking lot, so I definitely have concern that cars could be going through there and potentially hit a child. Another concern I put down is sometimes dirt bikes and four-wheelers come through that area, and again, them going at higher speeds and not being cautious of someone coming around the corner of that building to be seen. We also have two doors on the south side of our building, which we would like to use as entrances and exits for other programs that we do, which we can't utilize at this time because we can't have kids walking in and out of that alleyway, and when we would open that door, it could potentially be a blind spot that they would know that a car was coming from that east side. Again, like I kind of mentioned, people currently park there because they don't know that it's not, and I've been trying to be very cautious of that and telling people this isn't a parking space, we have parking to that side so that they don't get ticketed and/or vehicles get hit in the process of being located at that spot. My intention of this is to do nothing of negative to any of the surrounding homes or people in our neighborhood, it is primarily a decision that I think benefits our business and the safety of all the people that attend any event at our location. Thank you.
Thank you, little parent council, I just, uh, one note for my memo, CSAT for Judith, the police chief, myself, phone restrictor, we all would look at this alley, there's no utilities running through the alley, so it's really a use of the neighborhood in question. We sent out the notices that's required by the council policy to the residents in the area. There is a resident here that would like to speak, so I just wanted to kind of come here and let you know that, at the time I memo, I received no phone calls about the issue, but just today I did, and so she is here to speak. I'll let her, if you are willing to listen to her, to speak on her thoughts on the matter. So she is a resident in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Angela, I live like three ways back home to the alley and my neighbors and I, at first I didn't think it was going to be a problem, but when you look at the alley and how it's used, it is a problem blocking that. When we're talking about children's safety, there's over twenty-five children in the neighborhood that do not have access to sidewalks. They use that alleyway to be able to go across the street safely, to go to the gas station, to the grocery store. There are several, I have twenty-two signatures from neighbors with their input on why this should not go through. Also, there is a neighbor that cannot not have that alley open because then they would not be able to park at their home. I have also several showing, several pictures showing how the pole and the fence in the alleyway makes it impossible for the utilities to turn right if they're coming north from that alley, or if they're coming south from the alley, from Monroe and then going to my alley and going back behind my home on thirteen twelve South Monroe, they cannot turn left because of the trucks. There is a pole, a utility pole, as well as a fence there, so we're talking utilities are going to have issues. Parents are going to have issues, and several people that use this alleyway for their homes to park, to get to their homes to park, to get to their garages to park, because it's hard to turn with that pole as well as that fence there on the corner, and I have pictures, if I could bring them, as well as signatures, as well as why people do not want. Thank you. I think that's about it. It says it all in there and what the, what the other neighbors say about, you know. Thank you.
Am I allowed to respond to comments about things with that nature?
Um, you've heard two minutes.
Okay.
Sure, this is, this is outside our normal, um...
Sorry.
So we're, maybe the whole of us would go to minutes.
So I'll give you thirty seconds, one more.
Okay. If you look at the outline that Jerry Palm has sent, as far as the boundaries go, our property is the only thing, there's in the middle of these two sections, this is a brass alleyway, so where our property line ends, there is no other house and or any other type of residential being on our side of the property line. So the alley goes from the street over to Park Street, any house that needs access, the point where we would be blocking off the alley is at our property line, and there's still from the point of our property line until the first neighbor's property line to the east of there, a bit ten feet. So we would not be blocking any driveways, we would not be restricting anyone from being able to access their garages or anything of that sort. There are two houses that have a garage off the alleyway, which they would be able to access from the east side when they come in, so they would pull in the east alley and they would be able to go that way. There then is that brass alley that's there too, which is still a known alleyway, it's just grassed. So, the idea of it being blocked, another point that I did put on my list is, yes, it was brought up that kids use our property to walk through, which is an added liability to my business, because children are walking through there that are not supposed to be on the premises, which, I mean, if they were walking straight through the alley to the road, then they are on public right-of-way, but that's not what happens, they walk through the alley through my parking lot and then over to wherever they are going, which is technically trespassing, I guess we were going to come to terms with that. So, it's again a concern for people that who aren't supposed to be there, cars are backing out of parking spots or whatever it might be, that one of those children that shouldn't be there gets hit. We also have a major garbage problem in our parking lot because of people passing by and walking and dropping all their belongings, so every single morning, I go pick up pop cans, cigarette butts, trash cans, whatever it might be, pizza boxes, who knows, so those are down calls to that comment also, again, not trying to do that favor. Thank you.
Is this, excuse me, um, blocking with a fence, or what is the plan?
Can I come and show you?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm dicing is how would the alley be blocked off?
Our alley, or how would that alley?
I believe, I believe the petitioner would like to put a fence across the alley.
Yes. And that's not feasible with people that cannot back up because there's a fence behind them on their property, they have to go out that way or come in that way?
If you could pull a car forward, you could pull a car backwards, so that logic doesn't quite make sense.
You haven't parked there.
Well, I guess the other question is, is it, um...
There's also slogan children's signs everywhere that alley's been in use with restaurants and everything else, never had a kid hit, never had a kid hurt, so this is just, uh, somebody trying to gain access to public use for their personal business.
In that aspect, the restaurant's not necessarily geared towards children, um, so I'm trying to just understand the safety aspect on it. I'm not sure if speed bump or, you know, ballards or something instead, like posts so that you can't drive through, but you can walk through, is it, is it an option, just as, uh, something to think about for this one? Council, if you had a chance to all review? Are you, do you have any questions?
I don't know.
Then I guess I will request a motion and second. Again, the aye would be to vacate the alley.
I believe we can.
We have them.
We do it. And I wrote it down. All right, are we ready to call the roll?
Remember this, it's ours for affirmative votes.
Crouch.
Aye.
Darby.
Aye.
Herry.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Um, aye. Item three. Resolution ordinance amending section two point four eight point one ninety-five of the Superior Municipal Code of Ordinances and establishing a schedule of charges for emergency medical services, making a motion and second to adopt.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jacob and second by Matt. Any discussion?
I'm going to add a few remarks, the bulk of our policy at this table will be reimbursed to us on payment formula-based Medicare and Medicaid, but these charges would be for very party insurance companies or personal pay. The chief may want to comment on the actual dollar amounts and how they run right debt.
So as presented at the committee of the whole last week, the rescheduled was developed from a random sampling of the ambulance services around us and what they're charging, took an average of those amounts to come up at fifteen hundred dollars per ALS call and twelve hundred dollars per VMS call. And then the, uh, supply charges that are added on there are currently, the market rate is going, and as fast as it allows to adjust those as needed a couple of times a year as prices go and so forth.
Then we publish those to the city website or somewhere where it's easy to find. Okay, any other discussion or questions? Clerk call the roll, please.
Crouch.
Aye.
Darby.
Aye.
Herry.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item four, resolution twenty-two twenty-two thirty-eight, authorizing, resolution of authorization for a grant between the City of Streeter and open space land acquisition and development Osland, a conjunction with the proposed Marilla Park Pond Improvement Plan. Get a motion and second. Okay, Brian with the motion and Tim with the second, any discussion?
This is an application for a grant, whether or not it gets approved, is it a separate question?
So, uh, this, uh, this was presented to council last year, and it's a grant through intellect department and natural resources, uh, and Osland Open Space Land Acquisition Grant, uh, is due on the thirtieth of this month, uh, so I got about nine days here to put all the, we have it together, we'll have to submit it if you guys end up approving it tonight, but this project would install a gaming basket wall along the south side of Marilla Park Pond, that meant there'd be a sidewalk then right to the water's edge, there'd also shelter, the repaving of the parking lot next to the pond, uh, so that that's what, basically to clean up that Marilla Park Pond work that was done by the local one fifty a couple of years back, uh, to complete those improvements and kind of bring it, you know, there'd be a shelter, the paving, and then the sidewalk along that southern edge is what it'd be. Uh, the total cost, the estimated cost is two hundred and five, two hundred and five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and we're eligible for hopefully ninety percent of that cost, so the, the grant, the rules would be for a hundred and eighty-five, three fifty-five, and then we'll hear in the spring if we, if we do apply, whether, this is just for application.
Then we get title insurance.
Title insurance, yes, it's been ordered and...
It's been ordered and asked for an expeditions delivery.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
This is the, this is the project to go to the high schools building to shelter, right?
No. Yes, yes. Clerk call the roll, please.
Crouch.
Aye.
Darby.
Aye.
Herry.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item five, resolution twenty-two twenty-two thirty-nine, authorizing the purchase of one new plow and rebuilding two current plows for the City of Streeter Public Works Department, firm Monroe Truck Equipment Juliet, Illinois, can I get a motion and second?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, Jacob with the motion and Matt with the second, any discussion? Mrs. Jeff is here, if you wanted to...
Jeff? I don't know if any of the council has been down with the public works facility in the last couple of years, but the equipment down there is beyond its useful life for the most part. This resolution would enable us to be able to provide plow service in the coming years. We have one truck that is beyond its useful life, uh, so we are behind the eight ball in getting new trucks. It's, as of, with supply issues the way they are right now, it's going to take two years to get a new truck, so the rebuilding of the two, still using the trucks that we have now is the only way that we're going to be able to provide services for the next couple of years.
Are those the trucks that are currently sitting in the building?
Not right at the moment, no, they're getting ready to get plows put on and...
Oh, the rebuilding works. We're using two existing trucks, so we're going to rebuild them?
Yes, yes, the chassis, the chassis in the, in the truck, the cab and engine and everything is fine on them, it's all the accessories, the dump box and hydraulics that are shot.
Any other questions? All right, clerk call the roll, please.
Crouch.
Aye.
Darby.
Aye.
Herry.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item six, resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash forty, authorizing the purchase of two new mowers for Annars and Golf Course, one fairway mower and one grins mower for the City of Streeter for a marbles turf and tractor, can I get a motion and second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Tim and second by Jacob. Any discussion?
Are the current mowers we have broke or just need replaced?
They're...
I couldn't hear Lance speaking on the council.
Yeah, uh, Gregado was here, they're very bad shape.
Maybe can they finish the season and like...
Well, we're going to have to finish the season because by the time we'll get these mowers, the grass is pre-rolled.
Yeah.
It's not growing, uh, but we'll give us time to pencil through everything because these are used mowers, they're coming to us inspected already by their mechanic, but we'll have an opportunity to make sure everything's right and sharp and done for later next year.
I talked to a friend in the golf industry and he said that now is not a good time to buy used mowers, with the season, the inventory increases, just give us more options if we can hold off till November, December, that's, that would be my suggestion, and I think we should rush into it if we're not even going to get them this year anyways, we'd be able to pick up used mowers in the off season.
Well, there's, at the pay end of the brand, uh, there's one vendor in Illinois, we're working with them trying to identify, uh, inventory, you're right, it's, it's very tight.
Yeah.
It's still...
I know it's buying in October, buying January through April.
Well, yeah, I'm not going to get into the, these mowers are, or the fairway mower, I understand it's in North Carolina, it's a multi-state, uh, so there's golf being played across the country, the inventory is pretty light around here, uh, these are all specialty equipment, the cost of a new fairway mower...
Yeah, they're...
...by eighty-five grand, so to find one with relatively low miles and pretty good shape is, is going to be a trick, and you can buy something, but we've been lucky by buying, we're replacing something that we bought used.
Oh, I, I think we should still buy used, I'm just saying used inventory goes up at the end of season, not, off-season still going on.
Well, I have these mowers on hold, uh, if you reject it, I'm not sure I can get the next round on hold, but if you want to give us approval to buy used ones in November, I'm, I guess I'm good with that, I, we, if we're going to operate next year with new equipment.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're still not sure about what we're going to do with our golf, uh, golf carts, and, uh, so the T V, T's mowers, okay, we're trying to do a final assessment on that equipment.
Other questions? All right, clerk, call the roll, please.
Crouch?
Aye.
Darby?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Vida?
Aye. Okay, we'll go to item seven, resolution twenty twenty-two forty-one. Approving and awarding of facade grants to property owners Doug Shulandrew and Jennifer Beckman for three oh three East Main Street. Street, Illinois, in the amount of ten thousand four hundred dollars. Can I get a motion and second?
Motion by Matt and second by Tim. Any discussion?
Yeah, with all the ones we approved at the last meeting, we have this available to keep going or?
So this was, I believe, just missed on our last round?
Which we approved quite a few of on the last.
We approved like eighty, ninety thousand dollars at the time.
On the last time?
Yes, the last meeting. I just wanted to weigh here. The reason this is in front of you tonight and I spoke to this is I asked this to the place in the council. November of twenty twenty, the planning commission approved or recommended the approval of this grant. In twenty twenty-one, because of the way the program is set up, second time applicants, which these are not second time applicants, but the original owner of the building that they purchased it from had a grant from twenty fourteen, the first year of the program. So it was held. There was no funds available for it last year. It technically should have been in line before the ones that you approved last one. So I'm bringing it to you as an oversight on my part to get it in front of you last month for approval. Planning commission had recommended it in the prior year. So they called after they did see the newspaper article about the approvals. So as far as the financing, I'll let everyone speak, but that's, that's why I'm very heated. So I apologize for that.
Well, in terms of financing, the city was a recipient of ARPA and PERS funding. We preserved the money so that we would have it available to buy our equipment instead of our ambulance service. Purchasing ambulance is four hundred thousand dollars. We'll have some liquidity issues to deal with because of the delay in the building versus when we have to pay the personnel costs. But we should have more of the efficient PERS money that have not to be allocated for any particular purpose. Now, we do have outstanding grants that will have to fund match four grant applications. And we have a worthy grant for the incubator, which is a substantial component. We received nine hundred thousand dollars last year for ARPA, about five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars prior year. We're expecting another nine hundred thousand dollars this year. So we have plenty of cash that can be allocated for one-time purchases. If you don't wanna use those funds, they're funded continually in expense because once it's gone, it's gone. We'll still have to expense. And as reported at our committee of the whole meeting, I believe our operating funds now are balanced. We're bringing in the revenues and we're spending on a year-to-year basis. So we're, we're healthier, much healthier now than we were just a couple of years ago. And that's been.
Um, I believe the state was just releasing that second round for ARPA. And any other questions with that?
So just to be clear, we, we could, like giving the ten point four K, that's not gonna rat us or not?
No, it's, this is, the facade grant is one of the most successful projects we've had to help spur the redevelopment of our downtown. And it has traditionally been funded using tax increment financing dollars. But we have enhanced efficient growth in, in our TIPS to transfer enough money to make the debt service pay. Primarily on the North Point debt that was in the first few years back. And so we need to identify some other sources of revenue. We want to continue that program. Last year, I think we budgeted ten thousand dollars of general fund money simply because there wasn't TIPS money available. In prior years, it was about fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year that we were able to allocate using TIPS. And so to keep the program going, which I think is important because there's still quite a bit of traditional work that's required downtown. Particularly in the eastern area in Long Bridge, that I would encourage the city to look at all of its resources to see what we can like to keep it going. It's also a way in which you can leverage some public money with private investment for a long-term benefit of the downtown. So that's, it's a program I didn't develop or introduce, but I think it's really has generated the benefits to the community that you've seen. All the big investment in downtown is largely due to the, you know, the early investments made in, by the city and other, you know, suits escaping improvements and the law dogs and so on.
Part of if you go back, this is kind of a comment with some of these, feel like the retail tax receipts are in your packet. Prior to some of the facade and improvements, it was kind of stale. We weren't keeping up with inflation. And it just, sales tax was just there. Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, there was just about a ten percent increase in some of that tax money. So you're seeing benefits of cleaning it up, businesses opening and some of those.
I'm just worried about, you know, we're finally in the black and I don't want to see as our OSO's back into the bed again. So that's all I'm really worried about.
No, and I understand that. And if this was a gift that keeps on giving, that is if you were to start a new program or hire some new people, then that would be a broken term mine because you've kind of locked it on future expense. The next year, you find that there just isn't operating dollars or capital dollars, which is what ARPA is about. Then you have to make that difficult decision. So you're matching a one-time expense with one-time revenue as opposed to utilizing what type of revenue to fund operations. We kind of got into that pickle, if you will, because we had about six thousand dollars or so in woodmill money that was used to support general fund. And when the woodmill money's ended about two years ago, then we're, you know, we're trying to figure out how we're gonna make ends meet.
Any other questions? All right, clerk, call the roll, please.
Crouch?
Aye.
Darby?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Vida?
Aye. Okay, item eight, there's an update on the intergovernmental contracts for ambulance services.
Well, I'm still waiting. As of late this afternoon, I have a final contract with Long Point fired. I am not expecting any substantive difference. I'm just trying to get through their attorney's office. They have had no issue with the football compensation that was agreed to by Cornell and Pontiac as well as a higher number that was agreed to by Dwight and Allen Township Fire Protection District. The Allen Fire Protection District would like to contract with the city that handles just a part of their district, probably about ten calls a year. They have their own ambulance, but there are times when they can't staff it. And so we'll be, I'll be presenting a contract along the same lines of what we'll have with Long Point. Now, Reading, we're in the night. It finds itself in a very difficult situation. For years, they've been running their general operations at a very low rate. And they have no levying authority currently for ambulance services. So they find that they have no ability to pay now for services. In recognition of that, I offered to finance the Fire Protection District. And so they're able to generate the funds through a tax levy. And then depending on what that, what it ultimately becomes, fund current costs as well as to pay it back over time. And we can negotiate the terms of that as part of the contract or even later, you know, a little payment and a little treaty and negotiate it later. But the idea is that we could become long-term partners in this enterprise. What you heard tonight and I learned a week ago that the board, the Fire Protection Board, does not feel comfortable entering into an agreement that exceeds their current ability to pay for services. My position has been that I understand that they have a discomfort, but there is a positive of delivering services. As you know, we went out and purchased the ambulances. We entered a contract with a private company. And none of the outside agencies are willing to get paid, you know, years down the road, if at all. In that meaningful amount. So what they're asking us is something that we could never pay to any of the vendors that we had to go out and make deals with in order to even offer the services. So my recommendation to the city council would be to continue to try to work with Reading. Offer them an opportunity to finance any, any, any cost that they can bear. I think that that's up there proposition. Go through this, the city taxpayers are gonna be offering highly discounted services to the homes around Streeter that don't support the city through city property taxes. And I personally believe that that would be unfair, that they have to pay more than, than the people outside. Particularly given that there's a lot of homes outside of the, outside of the city, in the district covered by the Reading that both Otter Creek and Eagle Township and Reading Township that are valued at. You know, they have values higher than, you know, values in Streeter. So a lot of middle-class families live just outside of Streeter. And I believe that they should be paid as, you know, at, at a market-driven rate for those services.
So we're basically about nine days left before this change is over. We're looking at, and our clock is ticking with this one. So I'm gonna ask Dave to keep negotiating. I'm working with Reading to try to find some kind of agreement. I know we discussed beforehand if someone from council wanted to also be involved in hope. David can come together. Thank you, Tim. So I, and I have no problem doing so, just to try to help us see what we can do. Is there, I don't know if anyone else would want to be a part of it, but that's what, that's how I think we need to proceed. So we have, can get that sorted. I know I've been pretty steadfast since it came up in February that we can't have people in city limits covering everything for those outside. We've run into that issue for years upon years where we've got parks and, and when there's an emergency and La Salle County can't make it, we send police when they're, you know, so we've had this there. So I don't want to leave this, you know, I have to protect, we have to protect the citizens of Streeter that are, are. Our constituents, but that doesn't mean I wanna leave Reading high and dry either. So hopefully we can get something together, conference prepared, that we may need to have an emergency meeting and call, like you, with a two-day notice, probably sometime next week, so that you know that that's coming. Do you have any?
Well, timing is of the essence. In the next few days, we'll be getting our state license of operational service. We would have already had it at the same point that occasion. But the final pieces are going together. And so we'll have a meeting at eight o'clock on October one. EMS services are gonna be provided to the, you know, through the city of Streeter. And our service map, our service territory, because we have to inform dispatch of what we're gonna cover. Will be the City of Streeter, parts of Ranson, and the Long Point District. Cornell is currently covered by Pontiac and absent an agreement with Reading. Can't cover Reading. You have no basis to be there. And it's been my position all along that if Reading had its own ambulance, then our backups are five minutes away. We could be each other's backup, which would mean that our cost is actually lower. We could probably run with just one ambulance. We could cut our costs significantly. But because our backup is so far away, Dwight, Pontiac, Ottawa, sometimes Grand Ridge, that our operating costs are a lot higher than they otherwise would be if we had a closer neighbor. So regardless of which way it works, whether Reading has its own ambulance or we provide service, our costs, you know, we should be really looking at how we can contain our costs going forward.
Gary, I know when we did the study, eighty percent of the time we only need one.
Eighty percent of the time, and that included the larger difference. That included Reading, that included Long Point, that included Cornell, which, and Cornell, I don't think had that many calls. But it, you know, it still had forty-fourty-fourty-four calls a year. So, yeah, it's, it's all about long-term sustainability and, and operating this enterprise as a business so that we can cover our costs to minimize the impact on the Streeter taxpayer.
No further discussion. We'll move to item nine, the consent agenda. Get a motion and a second.
Sue.
Second.
And fund warrant total nine hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred and thirteen. Motion and second. All right, any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Crouch?
Aye.
Darby?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullen?
Aye.
Mayor Vida?
Aye.
All right, next item, city official comments?
Okay. Um, just mostly on, especially I mean, stuff like that, we're in a general, really feel free to contact me. I wouldn't be unhappy to talk to anybody about anything that I'm within my power to discuss. That's really all I got to say on it. I'm moving to listen.
Okay, do anything?
The only thing I was thinking, I was at the park the other day and noticed the Majestic. And I'm definitely concerned of its condition. I see they're asking for money. I don't know if that's something we, is the city can start talking to them, just find out what's gonna happen with it before it ends up as a pile of rocks, because I know it's been definitely ignored. So that's all I have.
Sure, thank you. And Brian?
Um, the only comments I have, I need to talk to Jeremy about kind of things from the. He steps in part again. Five Street is gearing up to for decorating park. We've already got the Halloween decorations up. We have the street locations. Uh, we've already got the Halloween decorations up. We have the street locations. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Um, I will note for council, um, November eighth is election day, but we also have a committee of the whole scheduled that date. Um, and the planning commission meeting. So I think for November, we're gonna want to reschedule so that we, um, aren't trying to fit anybody into the Mulford Room or the Pluto Room. Um, and then this Saturday is Pluto Fest and Food Truck Fest in the city park. So there'll be a lot of activities, um, there this weekend. Um, and just in general, I had seen quite a few between, um, the farmer's market, the library had some activities. Um, Lions Club had a golf outing. The Fourth of July has a golf outing on Sunday. So there's quite a bit. Um, there's a movie at the library. So there's quite a bit of activity in Streeter this weekend. And streeter.org has that calendar, but, um, kind of a busy weekend always in the last weekend of September. So we can go ahead and, um, adjourn to executive session. We get a motion and second.
A move.
Second.
Okay, Brian with the motion and Tim with, or sorry, Matt with the second. Clerk, color roll please.
Crouch.
Aye.
Darby.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullen.
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
And let the record show that was for the discussion of personnel issues.